The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Middletown Planning Board meeting for April the 7th, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for the record and for our transcriptionist's benefit, Ms. Hewson is absent this evening. Mr. Sexto is here this evening in lieu of Mr. Welch. And I think that's it. So we can proceed with our agenda. First on the agenda this evening is the approval of February 3rd, 2021 Planning Board Minutes. I need a motion. Ms. Witt? I need a second. Mr. Madden? Any corrections, changes? Discussion? Roll call? Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britton?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
And Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. All right, moving into the main agenda for this evening. We have some preliminary hearings this evening, not for any action, but for future presentation and possible action at a date not yet determined. First, on the preliminary hearings, is 108 Lucor Street LLC, 9-29 Canal Street Residential Apartments. Please state your name for the record, sir.
Peter Sorillo.
How are you doing?
Good. I'm here with Andy Leiter, owner of the project. I know it's been a while since we met. I'm glad we're actually here in person rather than a Zoom meeting. Maybe that's a good sign of things to come.
You can take your mask off too, sir, along with... Yep. Thank you very much. Yep. Well, that'd be a help to hear you.
So do you want me to sort of recap the project? Or...
Yes, please, because we're kind of catching up.
Yep.
And I know you've made some progress and so the board can hear you and...
Absolutely.
Prepare to move on.
So the project is the renovation of 9-29 Canal Street. It is the old Borden factory building. We are looking to develop 54 residential units. It is... The square footage is about 108,000 square feet of residential. They will go on the first, second, and third floors. We're going to have 15 one-bedroom units and 49 two-bedroom units. There is some commercial space that will be located in the basement and on the first floor, which will equal to about 27,000 square feet. Those uses are not yet defined, and it would be future development. Right now, we're mainly looking at developing the residential units. The site plan, we're looking to develop the rear yard into some outdoor space for both the residential residents and the commercial spaces. In the new set of plans, I was able to obtain an old survey for the courthouse property that's owned by the city. It was not very accurate. I did go out. I did some field measurements. Again, it's enough for a schematic design. I don't know if I would base a construction document off of that. So we probably, at one point, need an updated survey. And actually, we did... We also did share that plan with Mayor Di Stefano and Maria, who is present, for any feedback they may have. All of the parking is going to be located at the Acme Bus Site. We need 105 spaces for the Canal Street project, which leaves about 85 spaces for the museum project that Andy is planning to put into that building. We did add a site lighting plan, as asked, for the Acme Bus Site. We also... I had my mechanical engineers look at the electric, gas, water, and sewer loads. We then took the electric and gas loads, shared them with Orange and Rockland, and I believe there is a letter in the package from ONR basically stating that there is enough electric and enough gas in the area. Obviously, both of those services are going to have to be redesigned. On the site plan, I did indicate sort of on the rear where the new service is coming in, where we intend to put the electric meters. The gas meters, we didn't get as far, but we're looking at putting those on the opposite side of the building. We basically picked up your other comments. And we did add, there was, on the basement level, we did change that plan because there was an area in the back that we could never get to. So now that the tenant moved out, we were able to measure that, and we added that. So that did adjust some of the square footages that I had mentioned in our January meeting. I met with the fire inspector back out at the site. We talked about access. Again, we agreed that the back alley cannot be a fire lane. You can never get a truck back there. But there is access to get to the roof from the courthouse and theater parking lots. Again, there was concern about the utility lines along Canal Street, but, you know, we just can't move those lines. It would be crazy. And I believe that's pretty much all the comments we sort of had from the January meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Just so the board knows that, you know, the city is going to have some cross easements with the applicant so that they can use South Street lot. And also to work in conjunction with you and the ONR with any transformer needs or any electrical service needs. I've been informed that the mayor is willing to cooperate. Whatever you need to do in the back there, try to accommodate your new service. Okay?
Terrific.
Just so you know. All right? Very pleased with the parking. The parking has been basically... The applicant has taken all the bulk regs, and he's met him with his property that he has over, which is the Acme Bus Company. So that's a... I think that's a great asset. I appreciate your help in that and designing that properly.
Thank you.
That's all I really have from the city. Does anybody have any questions or any comments they would like to ask the applicant? Mr. Numcheck?
Hi, Peter. Hi, David. Are you going to be redoing the sidewalks, Peter? On Canal?
Some will have to be done, redone, but if they don't, if we're not touching them, we weren't planning on it.
What about behind this resident courtyard that's behind here? How much lighting is going to be back there?
We did not design the site lighting yet. I think it's going to be minimal. We're not going to light it up.
No, you're not?
Well, not like a parking lot light up, but we want it to be safe, right? Security.
Yeah. That was my concern.
Yes. No, we would definitely put lighting in there.
And you said the lighting plan is not done yet?
No, we did not look at outdoor lighting on the Canal property.
Because you're going to have, by the entrances, whatever, you're going to need some kind of lighting for people going in and out, especially in the back. I haven't been back there, so I'm not sure what kind of lighting there would be back there. There's no sidewalks or any... This is all going to be concrete? This courtyard?
It's basically a hardscape. It's a... We actually like to try to save the existing brick pavers that are there.
Good.
I think that's going to be a little bit of a challenge, but we're going to try.
What about trash? How is that going to work?
I actually have a call into DPW. We do show on the south side of the building a dumpster. We have a trash room inside. We were planning on a compactor, but we don't know, actually, if city is going to be picking up the garbage and if they have any requirements. So I actually, again, do have a call into DPW, just have not resolved that.
Okay, because that could be an issue with this many apartments.
Well, that's why we're planning on a compactor. I showed one dumpster there. I actually just said to Andy a couple days ago, I think we probably need to put another dumpster, but, you know, again, I called Brian Smith and just haven't heard back from him yet.
Yeah, as I see here, there's a trash room. A trash chute. Only one of them? There's one in each floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there will be some type of building manager there that would be taken care of, things like that. So the residents would bring it down to the trash room, and then they would be responsible of getting it out to the dumpster.
Are you planning on security cameras and things in that effect?
Yes.
And I saw you had your things for water and for gas. There's enough for the pipes to go for getting water to the building?
Yep. Well, I do have a letter, but I wasn't... I don't want to share it with you yet because we think it might be a little incorrect. Right now, we're coming up with quite a bit of gallons per day, and we think it's incorrect. So we're going to redo... I'm going to talk to my engineer, relook at that, and then present that the next time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Worst case, if there's not enough water for either the domestic or the sprinkler, we just have to put booster pumps in.
Okay.
I would just like to also share Mr. Numcheck's concern about the lighting in the back alleyway, so to speak. Now, whatever you do, you should adequately light that area because you're going to have commercial space there and residential. And if you're going to use it as you intended, like to cross over to South Street, you might have additional foot traffic. So, yeah, we'd like to take some care in lighting that area.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Madden?
The north end of the building right now, toward the top of the hill, has loading docks. Are loading docks going to remain? Is there going to be a... So with 54 residential units and 27,000 feet of commercial space, trucks delivering, moving people, we're not going to have an access point?
Towards the south side, there is... On Canal is the main entry, and there's a ramp there, and that's where the elevators are. So I don't think we're going to have trucks unload way down there and have to have everybody...
So then the trucks would end up, even like for a commercial space, they would end up going in that lower entrance and bringing everything to the upper end of the building?
Well, the commercial space actually has a direct... A little further up Canal has a direct entrance to that level. And then also, the commercial space in the basement has a direct exit on the south side of the building.
Did I answer your question, Mr. Madden, or...
I mean, it answered my question. I think that with a project this big, we might want to consider, you know, availability of a place for trucks to be loading and unloading materials. This is a pretty large-scale project, and, you know, I mean, are we just parking a truck on Canal Street and, you know, with 54 apartments being moved into and moved out of and 27,000 feet of commercial space, which could be anything and everything?
Right.
It just seems like it could be a lot of truck traffic on Canal Street.
We'll look at that.
Yep, take a look.
Yep. Good point.
Any other board members like to comment, questions? Mr. Britton?
That back alleyway, is there going to be non-residential public access to that? Or is it just for residents?
It connects. I don't think we're going to put a gate there, so, yes, public can go through there.
Yeah, so I would second the lighting plan and security cameras, obviously.
Fire Department have any concerns?
I just wanted to ask about the parking, residential versus the museum parking. How are you separating that? Is there going to be a gated entry?
No, we basically have all of the residential towards the back. On the site plan, we do indicate it. We could probably do something with different color striping.
Okay. All right, that's all.
Is there any concern with development in the basement and ingress and egress?
No, we've talked about all of that. Everything's being covered, and that's going to be a fully sprinkled building as well. And they're actually adding... They're adding a couple extra features, fire features, to make up for the fact that we won't have access on the front side with, you know, for a ladder truck and stuff. So they've been very good working with me on this.
Excellent. Anyone else from the board? Any questions, concerns? I'm sure we'll see you again.
Still some work to do.
Yep, that's okay. You're progressing.
Just a question for your residents when they walk to the parking lot. You want them to walk the sidewalk, I assume, right, on Fulton Street? And then over, or are you... Are you concerned with people cutting through the...
What about them?
I mean, that's what they should do, but could they... I don't know how we're going to control them not cutting through the church parking lot.
Yeah, or the other building, the...
The old office building?
Yeah. I don't know if that's a concern or if, you know, it could... I mean, with those number of units, it's could be quite a few... What'd you say?
Four units?
105 parking spots. Just food for thought that...
What was the concern again? I'm sorry.
Just the foot traffic going from the building to the parking lot, you know, and no, no, there's... I would assume you want them to go the Fulton Street sidewalk, but...
Go publicly, yeah.
But obviously, if we're setting up the parking for the residents in the rear of that parking lot, nobody's going to do that.
Right.
So it just means that people are going to be cutting through additional other... Are they privately owned properties?
Yes. Well, the church parking lot definitely is, right? Know that city? All the way through to Fulton? Okay. That's what I meant, Mulberry, yeah.
Yeah, that's a municipal lot.
No?
So they could cut through there if they wanted to.
Okay. And that's maintained by the city, right? Plowed and whatever by the city? Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
Lighting in the parking, what are you talking about?
Lighting from the street side, walking over to the parking lot, like so... I mean, right now, it's lit, but is there going to be more lighting for the residents to walk, you know, to walk through?
I think Ms. Rooney wants to address that.
Just to address a couple of things, just to update you on some of the projects that are going on around downtown, like sidewalks are going to be done, intersections are going to be done. That's all part of the... Not just DRI, there's another lot of federal money that we're going to be doing the sidewalks. I believe the sidewalks are going to be done up Canal, Fulton Street, intersections, new lighting, crosswalks, and things of that nature. So all that is actually, I believe it's been out to bid and probably be starting sometime this year.
And do you know if they're proposing a crosswalk other than down at the bottom? They would be at the intersection, right, on Fulton?
I would... Well, obviously, down on Fulton, there'd be... Because they're putting all the ADA compliant lighting and, you know, the curb cuts and everything. I don't know about this going... It's totally... That's going from right across Canal. I don't know if a crosswalk is something that is allowable, or I don't know that part.
Whoever puts the crosswalk in kind of becomes liable.
Yeah.
So right now, there is no crosswalk.
You're providing the corners, like we...
Right.
You know, the public to walk and...
You would have to put additional traffic lights in too to control the traffic in order to have a crosswalk.
And remember, that intersection also, the building came down for it to be... The intersection's going to be changed... Well, Canal going down is going to be straightened out.
Right.
So there's going to be a different look to it. Also, on the garbage scene, we're working on garbage for the downtown, how we're going to be handling that. I mean, this is a large project, obviously, dumpsters and stuff, but there's going to be a meeting coming up for the downtown residents and merchants and building owners on how we're going to handle the garbage. And there was another point you brought up, loading zones. We're looking throughout the downtown as well to provide loading zones in certain areas with time restrictions and stuff. So all that is in the works right now while this project is happening at the same time. And, you know, we'll communicate, obviously, with these guys and have them come to the meetings and everything with all this going on, but that's all in the works right now.
Great. Thank you.
Maria? When do you think this street will be reconfigured?
I think they're looking at getting plans done this year, but the other intersections and everything's going to be starting. And this intersection is going to be done starting this year, so it must be part of the whole reconfiguration, so...
Thank you.
Great, informative. Thank you.
Okay.
Good, moving forward, both the city and yourself.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll be in contact again. Next preliminary hearing on the agenda this evening is SB Dulson Avenue Realty LLC, 2-8 James P. Kelly Way. This is for a Dunkin' Donuts.
I have a Jay Samuelson here who would like to speak on that virtually.
Okay. Please proceed.
Good evening. Jay Samuelson with Engineering Properties. Just want to confirm that you can hear me?
We can hear you.
So good evening again. Jay Samuelson, Engineering Properties. We're here tonight just for an initial presentation of this project. This is a proposed Dunkin' Donuts located at the intersection of New York Route 17M and James P. Kelly Way opposite the Quick Check. This is also known as the former Wheaties Furniture Site. We're proposing a Dunkin' Donuts. It'll have a drive-through with a dual menu board and a dual order board, so they'll be able to take two orders simultaneously. The building will have two pull-up windows, one for you to pay at, one for you to pick up. Our accesses will be off of, both off of State Route 17M and James P. Kelly Way. Both of these entries and access to the sites will be right-in, right-out only movements. You will not be able to make any lefts in or lefts out of this site. This site is a bit different because it's kind of split between the City of Middletown and the town of Weyonahda. The majority of the project is located in the City of Middletown with our access off of James P. Kelly Way and the Dunkin' Donuts running parallel. We do have an access off Route 17M that is in the town of Weyonahda, so we will eventually be going to them for a site plan approval as well. This is a large site. Currently, we've looked at a bunch of other options for the site, but nothing is proposed at this time. Nothing has come to fruition, so at this point in time, we are moving forward solely with a Dunkin' Donuts project. Off of each access, we will provide a paved stub that we will allow for potential future development of the remainder of the project, which will most likely all be in the town of Weyonahda. We are providing 37 parking spaces as of right now. Most of them are anticipation of some future use on other portions of the site, as the Dunkin' Donuts only require six by the City of Middletown zoning code, so we do have an excess parking. We have provided you with a set of plans that shows an overall plan, existing conditions plan, a demolition plan, a layout with all our dimensions. We have a draft grading and drainage plan showing you where we're proposing stormwater. We're currently working on a SWIP to go along with that stormwater. We're working on a landscaping plan as well, and we've also submitted a draft lighting plan for you to look at. Basically, we're here tonight just to make the overall initial presentation, and we're looking for the board to declare their intent to be lead agency so that we can circulate this plan. We need to circulate it to the New York State DOT to get their comments on Route 17M. Obviously, we need to circulate to the town of Weyonahda as portions of the development are in the town of Weyonahda, and we also need to circulate to the Orange County Planning Department as it's basically an intermunicipal project. So I just wanted to give a brief overview, try to get that accomplished tonight, and try to take or answer any questions that any board members may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Samuelson. Any board members have any questions?
The only comment, our engineer has not had an opportunity to review this, so it's still... Anything is still subject to their approval.
And it also refers to the comment that he started the SWIP. Our engineer firm will also be reviewing the SWIP plan also.
Correct. Understood.
Other than that, any other questions or comments, concerns? Yes, Mr. Numcheck?
The entrance on James P. Kelly Way, does that match the entrance over across for the store that the Quick Check does across the street?
It lines up with the exit from Quick Check.
It does.
Although we are being limited to right-ins and right-outs there. So when you come out of our site, you will have to go west on James P. Kelly Drive. You'll not be permitted to make a left or go straight across into the Quick Check.
Are you guys doing a traffic study?
Yes, we all... I forgot that. We also did submit a draft of a traffic report prepared by Collier Engineering, formerly Mazur Consulting, so you do have that for your review. It was submitted in draft form, but in speaking with them, I believe that it will be issued in the same form as a final, saying that there may be some minor increases in delays at the signalized intersection, but being that all the intersections are signalized, there would be no impact. But again, that's also subject to DOT review for the entrance on 17M.
Is there any kind of subdivisions that need to be done on this property? Because I remember this when it came to us before when the Subaru was going to go there, being there's so many different Weyonahda and Middletown together.
So right now, there is one lot in Middletown and one lot in Weyonahda that's shown on our plan. The tile line kind of cuts through a portion of the parking lot.
Yes, I see.
And but the... We're not... We don't have any buildings strata in the line, or maybe if the future use follows somewhere along the opposite from Dunkin' Donuts, we may have to provide some sort of subdivision in the future, but we definitely design this so that we do meet all future setbacks if required.
Okay.
I don't see the previous or the Wheaties building like on any of your plans, but this is a whole new entire, you know, standalone building, obviously, right?
Yes, if you look on the very first sheet of our plan, oh, 100.
Yep.
There is a tropical-shaped building on the northwest portion of the site. That is the former Wheaties building.
Oh, right up here. Yeah, this is the new building right here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I can't picture it that far back.
Jay, just following up on what John had asked you. Are all the pipes for water and sewer going to be on City of Middletown property?
Water and sewer, my anticipation is yes. Storm drainage, it will be a combination of both City of Middletown and town of Weyonahda.
Okay. Thank you.
So Jeff Schmart has to look at this yet?
Started. Yeah. He's started. Not fully done yet, yep.
He's in Florida, I think.
He's away, but he has knowledge of the project, and he... As of right now, he's okay with it, but he knows that things will develop, and he'll make further comments.
And he did a small, short-form EAF? I think I saw it for this.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Baron? On the entrances, have you spoken to them about the mountables?
Yes, I believe you got... You have our truck turning radius?
We do, and our entrance off of 17M will be completely mountable. The one on James P. Kelly, I'm not sure if we're proposing that or not. I believe that entrance has been made wide enough that we don't need any mountable entrance.
So I guess my only concern is that you have our turning radius, so we need to be able to navigate that truck from 17M to James P. Kelly Way.
I will... We have that truck. We will show it on our future plans and show the turning movements.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then, I think for the record, we're going to read into the record a resolution for lead agency so that the applicant can proceed with distributing plans to the proper agencies to continue the project. And we did... Mr. Numcheck, we did check that we can do lead agency. We'll just have to make sure we probably will do it again, and for Seeker, make sure that the final approval for Seeker is done. But, all right. Lead agency. make sure that the final approval for Seeker is done. But, all right, lead agency. Whereas the city of Middletown Planning Board has received an application from SB Dulson Realty LLC, tax map designation, section 64, block 2, lot 2.32, and located in the C3 zone for a site plan and special use permit for the construction of a Dunkin' Donuts. The project is located at 2 to 8 James P. Kelly Way in the city of Middletown. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Middletown Planning Board is declaring its intent to be lead agency with respect to the proposed action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, subject to the city engineer's final comments. And be it further resolved that the city of Middletown Planning Board is authorizing the applicant to distribute the lead agency coordination request in accordance with Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law and 6 NYCRR Part 617 to all interested and involved agencies. I need a motion for lead agency. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Higby, any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay. Jay, you need a copy of the lead agency?
Say that again, mister.
Do you need a copy of the lead agency?
Yes, I'd like a copy of that resolution, and then we can distribute from there.
Okay.
John, do you know when that would be available for? Yeah, do you have to read it?
Yeah, I have to sign. Martina gives it to me then I'll sign whenever she's.
Right, Martina, we can do it tomorrow if you want. I'm in tomorrow. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you very much. Next preliminary hearing is Franco Fidanza, 203 to 231 Dulson Avenue, retail and residential project known as Middletown Commons LLC.
I have a Thomas Kentop. You are unmuted whenever you're ready.
Hello? Ms. Hanson, do we have them on the line?
He's here. He's just self-muted. Wait, there is.
Okay, I think I found the green light. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you this evening?
Good. Yourself?
Thank you. Now I know you can hear me.
Yes.
Now I'll be careful what I say.
Good idea.
For those of you who are familiar with the project, as you can see, it's come a very long way. We've got a great deal of engineering that's already been accomplished, and we still have more work to do. We still have not been able to find any documentation for the existing Middletown common building, so that's kind of a hindrance for us, not knowing where power and signal and water and sewer, all of that is a big mystery to us, so it's taking a little longer to finish this up. I don't know if your engineer had an opportunity to preview this?
No, not as of yet, no.
Okay. Does anyone, just to bring you up to date, we made all of the recommendations from this board and from the fire department, and so all of your comments and the comments of the fire department have been implemented on this plan. And so now, now all we have left to do is some additional grading and soil erosion and just work on the SWIP, and that's pretty much the direction that we're headed.
Okay. Does anyone from the board have any comments, questions, concerns? They have done a lot of work. They're addressing the issues that we discussed previously. Go ahead, Mr. Numcheck.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about the entrance coming in and out on Dulson Avenue. I remember we talked about that. Did you change that or give it a little bit more space?
Well, the ingress and egress is Isaac, and there is the existing, that rear egress that we will be utilizing. There is another project in the adjacent lot, and so we will delineate that information a little more as we learn more about the adjacent development.
I see on the plans on the very first page about the wetlands, I see there's some wetlands right in where this building is, commercial residential building, and also wetland C by the parking lot. Is that correct?
There's several small areas that are not an issue.
Jeff will look at that, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm sure once Jeff and Ron Rink, who does the stormwater pollution plans, we'll get into that a little bit more.
That's fine.
The existing driveway, have you?
We've already begun the SWIP.
Could you repeat that, sir?
He's working on the SWIP.
I said, I said that would be fine. We've already begun the SWIP, so we're prepared for any, any comment.
Okay. The existing driveway noted on the plans. Have you secured the easements? Are you going to use that driveway?
My, I'm going to say yes.
Okay.
I know, this is just something that the lawyers have to kick around, but as far as we're concerned, any easements that are going to be required that haven't already been put in place with the purchase of the property, because those easements travel with the sale, we will get that all in place.
We would need a copy of them to review them and the title as well.
Yes, of course.
And also, since you do plan on using that existing driveway, my only comment I'll make initially is that we may restrict that to, in this case, a right-only coming out. You may not be able to use it as an entrance because the way the Dulson Avenue is lined, that really that driveway is not supposed to be used like that. You're not supposed to cross the traffic to get to it, so it may end up being an exit-only with a right-hand turn.
How many lanes are in a physics drive?
It's not used that way now.
It's not on here.
But of course, we can look into that. We have a traffic study prepared. I believe we've provided a copy of that to you.
You say you have a traffic study that you're going to send to us?
I believe I sent that with this submittal.
Oh, okay. Yes, we have received it, and I guess Jeff has it, or our engineer has it.
Have you coordinated that traffic study with the new Dunkin' Donuts project as well?
I'm going to say no.
You might want to consider that.
No one doing the Dunkin' Donuts project reached out to us, but we could probably do something.
A similar question to what I asked earlier. Is there any provision at this facility for tractor trailers to be delivering stuff, moving people in or out, or moving goods into the commercial spaces?
You're asking, is there any provision for?
Is there a place that a tractor trailer will park to load or unload supplies and materials?
Well, that would, that would take place in the, in the, in the back of the building.
Okay.
The architect, Mr. Joseph Thompson, could probably better address the loading dock or the preparation for deliveries.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Thompson on the line. Hello?
Hello. How you doing?
Oh, good. So, Tom, if, as long as you've planned access and turning radiuses for tractor trailers to maneuver around the site, I think basically, we would just, and most of this would probably only box trucks, would just park and temporarily load and unload, like you mentioned, at the rear of the building or at the front covered portico. We don't necessarily have any loading docks. I don't think we're expecting that any of the ground floor tenants will, will have mass supplies or storage that's needed. So, I think it's likely, more likely, that we'll be looking at smaller, lighter box trucks for moving residents in and out and for basic equipment and deliveries to the building. And again, I think that could either happen either, you know, by temporarily loading off the back rear alley or access road, or underneath the front covered portico.
The circulation throughout the site has been designed specifically to accommodate the new fire apparatus that the city has purchased, which supersedes any box truck that you can expect to deliver.
Baron, would you require, like, fire lane language be put around the building so that cars don't park there?
There is a striping indication. We can add that language if you'd like. Ordinarily, on a detail, that would be included, as opposed to seeing it on a, on a large scale drawing. We can add that language.
Yes, and we discussed this. We had a meeting, and we discussed where the fire department access is going to be, and I don't foresee an issue with trucks getting in the way there, and I know that they're going to, they're going to have striping and verbiage there to keep people from parking, you know, in a fire lane, so. They've addressed every issue I've asked and my predecessor, Adam, so they went above and beyond here, too, so.
We've also changed the, the structure that will allow search and rescue to mount a curb and actually bring a 75,000 pound piece of equipment onto the site, adjacent to the building, apart from the road, apart from the driveway. That brings the, the equipment right against the building, you know, between 15 and 30 feet.
You know, any other comments or questions, concerns? Okay. These gentlemen are getting, are also progressing, moving forward, and we hope to hear more and get closer to a public hearing. I think our, I think our engineers have to get together.
Considering where we're at now, how do we get this information to the town engineer and schedule a public hearing so we can move forward?
I think we will disseminate that information to our, our city engineer, and anything, anything else that he needs will have to contact you, so we make sure we get it to him, and then we'll let you know when he's, he'll send you comments to finalize.
All right, so he'll be able to begin with this first step. Is that what you're saying?
He'll be able to begin with this first step.
Yes. You may. Yes.
Okay, and then we'll have subsequent, we've got about perhaps four or five more sheets of engineering details prepared for our next submittal. What date is the next submittal?
What's the next date?
Oh, the next submittal, like, when did you have that with the paperwork?
Well, if you have engineering plans, you should get those in right away so that our engineer can review it.
Is that separate of the, is that separate of the submittal date for the, for the board?
Yes. Yeah, if you have any additional engineering drawings or plans, our engineer would have to review that, and then he can comment on it, and then you would present your final plan to the board.
All right, separate of the board. You're saying that that would be separate of the board?
Right.
So, in other words, you're saying we could submit it to, to the town engineer at any time?
Right, but the sooner the better so that he has an opportunity to review, and you can incorporate his comments into a final submittal to the board.
All right, that's excellent. When is the next submittal date?
Martina?
No, our engineer actually wants to be back.
Yeah, he's on vacation at the moment. I'm not sure. We'll have to contact his firm to see if someone else can start the review or continue the review.
But what would be the deadline for them?
The engineer requires at least two weeks prior to the meeting.
So, the meeting's the 5th, the 21st?
It won't happen in May, so you should target June. But you can coordinate everything with our engineer so that you're all set for June.
All right. Can someone provide me with his contact information?
Yeah, if you call Martina tomorrow, she'll provide that to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments from the board before we move on? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a pleasant evening.
You too.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Was it me, or is that muffled?
No, it was muffled. Or at least I thought it was.
All right. All right. And last on our preliminary hearing this evening is NOAC number 5 LLC, 274 to 278 Dulson Avenue Hotel. How you doing, sir?
Good. Good evening. I'm John Fuller. I represent the applicant previously. We were last before you in the fall with regards to his proposed site plan to construct a four-story hotel on the subject lot, which is like a lot of the projects tonight off of James Kelly Way. This is a lot that sits adjacent to the Quick Check on, along that roadway, and it's sandwiched between that and the current Sleep Inn Hotel, which the, the developer owns and operates that adjacent to the lot. When we were here in the fall, we had a number of comments, which we received from, from the board as well as Mr. Atkins with regards to emergency access around the lot. We addressed a lot of those comments and the We addressed a lot of those comments in this latest revision of the plans, specifically to gain greater emergency access, especially fire access adjacent to the building, by moving the parking away from the building to allow for greater access to it. That was one of, I think, the big concerns that was addressed previously. So we made a number of revisions to the plans and wanted to come back before you to start to move this project along and answer any further questions that you have with regards to the proposal for, for a new four-story hotel.
Have you done a traffic study yet?
We have not, I heard that in the prior applications, we, it did not come up in our previous setting with you, and so if that's going to be a requirement, we'll need to do that, we have not done that.
You might want to coordinate with the two other applicants.
This is all on the City of Middletown lot, not Wayway Yanda?
No, the entire parcel is on the City of Middletown lot. We are proposing driveway access between this and the Sleep Inn, which will have cross easements for access, since the owner will retain ownership of both, both hotel operations, so. But yes, the entire development is within the City of Middletown lot.
You have the hookups to water and sewer and water?
Yes, when that whole area was developed, there was actually stubs put into the lot for future development, both water and sewer.
So the main entrance to get to the hotel will be where, on James Kelly Way or?
Yeah, so when, in the recorded subdivision for the development that included all of those parcels, the traffic light off of James Kelly is the 50-foot, there's a 50-foot roadway easement that's shared amongst the parcels, that's where the, it's Dairy Queen, Dairy Queen and behind the Quick Check, so that's, that roadway is actually a shared right-of-way easement, and that comes around the corner and goes through the Quick Check property, although it looks like it's the Quick Check's driveway, it's actually an access easement for, given to Lot 3, which this is in that original subdivision and Lot 2.
You do, you did an EAF for this?
Yes.
Does our engineer have this yet, does Jeff have this yet, too?
Yeah, we've gotten a couple of comments, rounds of comments from them, yes.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Have you started your SWIP plan yet or not?
Yes, yeah, actually, we had, we've done a full SWIP, it's, it does have a couple of outstanding comments from your engineer.
Okay.
But yeah, we have a full SWIP set up for this. Yeah, just for the benefit of the board, due to the, the nature of the site, we're going with complete underground stormwater, so it's an underground infiltration chambers, and then obviously any excess has an outflow to the adjoining discharge that is already the property, but yeah, it's, it's a fully underground, it's not an above-ground system.
Quite extensive.
What's that?
Quite extensive.
Uh, inexpensive.
Inexpensive, yes.
Yeah. It's really, in order to maximize the parking for the development, which we've demonstrated that in accordance with the ordinance, we're more than enough sufficient parking, but relative to industry need, we felt it was necessary to get as much parking as possible for the success of the hotel, and so the only place to put the stormwater is underground, so.
The hotel is four stories, how many?
Wise business.
Any rooms?
140 rooms.
140.
So yeah, it's four stories, it's a 17,000 square foot footprint, it's a Wyndham by, Wingate by Wyndham is the franchise, and we are proposing a 3,800 square foot banquet hall, just adjacent to it, that's what the lower level is there. Yeah, but 140 sleeping rooms.
Is parking shared between two hotels?
Well, we are providing cross easements as far as access is concerned, the Sleep Inn has its sufficient parking that was developed in accordance with Wayway Yanda's standards when the time that was built, and we're providing adequate parking for this development. I'm not sure, you know, other than putting up signage, restricting people from parking on one side or the other, but both properties have adequate parking for their design standards.
Do you have to go to Wayway Yanda on this project as well?
No, I mean, unless the board feels there's a referral necessary.
Is entrance through Wayway Yanda, onto the property?
No, it has its own entrance, but we would have shared drive between the properties, so if a referral is appropriate to Wayway Yanda, I'm happy to do that. I go there quite regularly, so they know me well.
Might be wise to do that so we don't have a holdup later on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to do that, I, you know, I go there, I'll be there in two weeks, so.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Yes, Ms. Witt?
I was wondering that you only have four handicap parking spots on this page, I'm just wondering, is there going to be a couple more, just because of how large your?
We actually have six.
You have six?
Yeah, there are six, and, which complies with OSHA, not OSHA, you know, with standards, I'm sorry, what's that? Yeah, with, with the federal guidelines for.
Okay. I was just curious, like, that seemed like a small amount.
Yeah, but there, there's six handicap spots provided, so. That's ADA standard.
No variances are required, right?
No, no, no variances.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Okay, good, we'll address these comments and get back before you. What, what is necessary to eventually get to a public hearing?
Well, we have to get our engineer's final comments, make sure you guys are all set, and then I think was, what, April 21st, did you say, was to make the May meeting?
I think it was April 21st, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll see what we can.
Yeah, we'll work with you and just try to get to the point where you can come before the board and have a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll need lead agency by us as well.
Yep, and Nick Dick, whole nine yards. Okay.
Okay.
Great.
All right, very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our agenda for this evening. Need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Britto, second. Mr. Higbee, all in favor?
Aye.